All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, June 5th. And I will note for the record that Commissioner Jones and myself are here in present in the Nat'U Hill Room. Commissioner Madeira should be joining us online, but I do not see her yet.
I'm here.
Ah, great. There you are. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. And we'll begin with our public statement, read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both our BB and MCSC.
All right, thank you so much. We're supposed to have a proclamation on National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I do not have it handy. So, but I will, but I will note for the record that Moms Demand Action is organizing their Wear Orange Prevent Gun Violence Rally. So Wear Orange tomorrow, June 6th. It is an annual event that occurs at the courthouse. And the, there's a resource fair at 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. And there's a program that starts at 7:00 PM. So Wear Orange, it's a sign that hunters use for safety. And Moms Demand Action is hosting that event. So we invite everyone to the courthouse for that tomorrow. And our courthouse will be lit in orange this weekend as well. All right. With that, we will move on to department updates.
Good morning, Commissioners. As of June 3rd, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have continued to decrease as well as wastewater concentrations. As of May 27th, the COVID-19 vaccine will no longer be included in the CDC's recommended vaccine schedule for healthy children and pregnant women. People who will be recommended to receive the vaccine are those over 65 and those with existing health problems. It's not clear at this time what insurance companies will do about the new recommendations and coverage. The Health Department does still have free COVID vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information or to schedule an appointment.
All right, thank you so much. What is the, what is the last day of that availability?
For the COVID vaccines?
Yes.
So we do have them available at the Public Health Clinic. I know that some of our childhood ones have expired, but we have various other age groups. So you can call for that.
Okay, I think what I'm asking is when is that new?
Oh, recommendation? It actually started May 27th.
Okay, so it's already in place. Okay.
Yes.
And there is a new RNA shot, neck spike, that was approved by the FDA, but we don't know what availability will be or any of that. Okay, comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
This actually breaks my heart because what is, what we're seeing is sort of the systematic taking apart of the vaccination system. And I think this comes at a time when we have new variants coming down the pipeline. I urge anyone who needs COVID vaccine to get it as soon as possible because there is a new variant that has actually been found. It has, there has been news about this in the last two weeks. And I just had a question for Lori. Do you know whether there are certain criteria where healthy adults who may have health problems that are not, you know, normally considered life limiting? Like, for example, they may have asthma. And do you know, like, where people can obtain guidance on what kinds of conditions can qualify them for continued COVID vaccinations, I guess? I imagine that many of us have conditions where we may take medication for them. They may not prompt us to go to our daughter, to our doctors in a bi-weekly or monthly schedule. Where can we get this information?
So, other than talking to someone's, you know, provider, of course, you can check the CDC website to see updated information is listed on there. That's kind of the best guidance at this time.
Excellent. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you. TSD, I'm wondering if you could move the transcription box up the page a little bit because it's, it's hidden for us here on, at the podium. Thank you so much. All right, any other departments have an update to offer? Ah, that'll work. Thank you so much, TSD. Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item. The next item is public comments. This is open public comment time for items that are not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, please. We ask that you provide your name and your county of residence. You may come to the podium in the Nat'U Hill Room or raise your hand on teams. It looks like we have two hands raised on teams, but I cannot see the names here. So I'm going to have to look.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll just begin a public comment to get the ball rolling. I want to continue the celebrating of Tuesday's Convention Center expansion groundbreaking, a truly historic day for our community. It's a milestone. It's been a long time coming, and we're now on the path to that 12-month economy. I commend this body for their leadership. As Commissioner Thomas said, the key was having the intuition to establish the CIB and then get out of their way. Today, we're seeing the fruits of that vision. The other thing I want to bring up is what I witnessed in a recent Plan Commission Administrative Session. They had some robust, respectful discourse that democracy requires. It's not always comfortable, but it is necessary. So disagreements isn't dysfunction, it's engagement. I want to stress that. And that engagement means that people hear deeply about Monroe County, which is what we want to see on our boards and commissions. So I encourage the Plan Commission to continue leaning into that discomfort. Respect differences, ask hard questions. Because even when we don't all agree, we're all working toward that same goal of more vibrant, a better, more balanced Monroe County for all. And I thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Amge. We also have Melanie from YSB with her hand raised.
Good morning.
Are muted. Now the hands down. Okay. All right. All right, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes for May 29th, 2025.
I will second that. Any comments, corrections, or edits? Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for May 29th, 2025?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable June 5th, 2025.
I will second that. Ms. Gairdo from the Auditor's Office, good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for June 5th, 2025 totals $1,801,091.21, and this includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira, comments or questions?
No, none.
I don't either. Is there any public comment on this item? You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on approval of claims docket, accounts payable June 5th, 2025?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
All right, thank you so much. I will note for the record that we have received two reports. Clerk of the Court's report for April 2025 and the Waits and Measures Report, April 16th to May 15th, 2025. And with that, we will move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Reed and Sons Construction Contract Number One, Change Order Number Five for Carst Athletic Complex Improvement Project.
I will second that. We have Ms. Whitmer, Director of Parks, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. This is very simple. This is not to increase the contract by a dime or penny. It's for $20,118.15 to be spent out of our contingency funds. That is within the contract. It's for the equipment garage electric stone gate in a storm fitting.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I see no problems with this.
Right. This is why there's a contingency line.
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira, comments or questions?
None. Thank you.
The community is starting to talk more and more about this. So this is a good, in a good way. It's highly anticipated. We're, we're very excited. So I know this, a lot of this rain doesn't help much, but, and we've had a lot this spring, but really appreciate all the hard work that's gotten us here.
Well, and I just want to tell the public, you know, we apologize for all the construction traffic, and it's, it is what it is.
Short-term pain, long-term gain. There you go. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on Reed and Sons Construction Contract Number One, Change Order Number Five for Carst Athletic Complex Improvement Project?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will now have the, there isn't really a motion, but we're, we're going to hear the 2024 Community Corrections Grant Annual Report. Ms. Street, good morning.
If I may share my screen, one moment. Good morning. I'm Becca Stright. I'm the Community Corrections Executive Director and Deputy Chief Probation Officer. I, every year, as part of our Community Corrections Grants, provide a annual report to the Commissioners. A little late this year, but better late than never. Just as a reminder that our, our Community Corrections and our probation department are a unified department. So all of our Community Corrections Officers are also probation officers. But these specific grants that we get for Community Corrections are from the Department of Correction. We've been with them, or partnering with them for, I believe, 43 years to receive money. These, this money funds staff for our Community Corrections Program, like Home Detention, all of our Problem Solving Courts, and then also our Pre-Trial Program. So I wanted to just give a little bit of an overview of what 2024 was like. Just to let everybody know that the probation department and Community Corrections does have a mission, and it's all about helping individuals with rehabilitation and then also community safety. In, like I said earlier, Community Corrections here in Monroe County began in 1983. That's when we began receiving Department of Correction funding. Again, we operate Home Detention and Electronic Monitoring, Day Reporting, Pre-Trial Services, Problem Solving Courts, including Drug Treatment Court, Mental Health Court, Veterans, and Reentry Court. This is an overview of the funding that we received in 2024. Each grant entity receives its own funding from the Department of Correction, and then you can see the total there. So we receive about 1.5, a little over $1.5 million in grant funding for these specific programs. You'll also notice that the only problem-solving courts listed in this chart are Drug Treatment and Mental Health Court. Those are the only problem-solving courts that the Department of Correction specifically funds. So that's why those are highlighted. Unfortunately, there is some bad news about the Department of Correction Grants. They have been flatlined for the past five years. So we, we and additionally any counties across the state have not really received much increase in funding, if any. This means that our local money, including the fees that the clients pay, is having to make up the difference to make up for cost of living and fringe benefit increases for staff. User fees are significantly down. It's something that we do keep an eye on all the time. But I also want to dispel any myths out there. Monroe County Circuit Courts and the judges do not put people back in jail solely because they can't pay their user fees. Probation officers and Community Corrections Officers don't solely file violations just because of fees. So while we recognize that we have the unfortunate position of being fee collectors sometimes, that is not the main goal or objective of people being, of our officers on probation. And then the Department of Correction Grants, like I said earlier, they only fund staff salaries and benefits, which I will highlight here why we do that in a minute. So just some quick facts about 2024. We had 111 case referrals to our Community Alternative Supervision Program, or CASP. That's just the long word of, or phrase for both pretrial and post-sentence electronic monitoring. So electronic monitoring can be used for people who are serving, or have been ordered to serve a sentence in incarceration, but the court has decided that they can remain in their home. They do get jail credit for serving home detention. We also use it for pretrial. However, our pretrial clients, it's always less than 1% of our total pretrial population that is ever on electronic monitoring or home detention pretrial. So it's very low. There were over 1,700 pretrial assessments completed in 2024. That means that our pretrial officers were in the jail or in the office meeting with clients every day who were arrested the previous business day. Those assessments are used, they're provided to the court to give us additional information to the court about a person's risk to maybe not show up to court or to reoffend during their pretrial period. And then the courts are using that information to determine if, while the person is out of jail pretrial, are there any conditions that are necessary? The courts also use this to determine if people can be released. The purpose of pretrial is to maximize release from jail. So that is what they're using those reports for. Drug Treatment Court had its 542nd graduate in December of 2024, and Mental Health Court had its 27th graduate by the end of 2024. Just a few visuals of some of our success rates. This is for Home Detention and Electronic Monitoring success rate. You'll see that 93% in 2024 completed successfully. We also keep track of pretrial safety rates and success rates. Pretrial safety rate means that people who completed their pretrial period, so they were arrested, released from jail while their case was pending, and they did not, were not, did not commit a new offense during that pretrial period. That's the safety rate. And so you'll see that it's fairly consistent throughout the past five years, about hovering around 93% to 94%. We also keep track of pretrial success rates. And this is people who completed their pretrial period, never picked up a new offense, never committed a technical violation or a violation that's not a new offense, and then also appeared to all their court hearings. And again, that's remained very, very consistent as well. Hovering in 2024, almost 69%. And then just to highlight the successes of the problem-solving courts. So Drug Court, 75% success rate. I know Veterans Court isn't part of our D, our Department of Correction Grant, but they're at 100% success rate in 2024. So I wanted to make sure to highlight that. Reentry Court, people who have been incarcerated and are coming back to the community, a 64%. And then Mental Health, the percentage of success is about 36%, but that's to be expected with that caseload. There are a lot of things going on with those clients that we're addressing. So I said that I wanted to get back to why the Department of Correction and why we use the grant funds to invest in staff. And as I've presented to this, this executive body before, and we've done other presentations around the community, our department is at the forefront of using evidence-based practices in our community supervision. Research shows that if our probation officers, and really all of our staff, are trained and we pay attention to the fidelity of evidence-based practices, that's going to equal better client outcomes. So that's better for the individuals and also better for the community for community safety. When I say evidence-based practices, that's referring to using the current research that's out there to guide what we're doing with our clients. It started in the medical field. Doctors, of course, should be doing what the, the research says on how to treat us. And criminal justice said, oh yeah, we should be doing the same thing when we're working with our clients. And of course, the ultimate goal is to not have individuals come back through the system. I won't spend too much time on this. I could go into this for, for a whole day. But this is the basis of what our officers are doing or keeping in mind when they're working with our clients. This is called the Risk Needs Responsivity Principle. So it's about who we're targeting with services, what we're doing with them, when we're meeting with them, or where we're referring our clients, and then how we're getting that done. So all of our clients receive a risk assessment when they start probation so we can determine what their risk level is and what their needs are. We also do a full background on our clients to make sure, or to analyze what's bringing them to the system in the first place. And then we're also responding to any responsiveness needs. That could be anything from gender responsiveness, is there, are there issues with education levels like reading, so making sure that we factor all that in. Evidence-based research also shows that there are certain factors that are correlated with people's commu, or risk of offending. The top four, or the big four, are the antisocial attitudes and beliefs, antisocial peers, antisocial personality, and family. So our officers, when we're analyzing what's bringing a client here, if one of those top four are identified, we make sure that their case plan is going to address any of those concerns. You'll also see that there's the lesser four risks, substance use, employment, education, school, and then what they're doing in their free time. I know everybody is really surprised that substance use is considered one of the lesser four. We absolutely address it, but we know through research that usually the substance use is being driven by one of those top four concerns rather than just a simple use. And then I also could go on forever with this, but I wanted to make sure that I, I shared with you the eight principles of effective intervention. This is what our department adheres to in every interaction, every policy that we put together, every change in what we're doing, this is what we refer back to. So this was, this is from the National Institute of Correction. And these are the things that we're supposed to be doing in our, our work with community supervision clients. So we're supposed to be doing a risk assessment. We're supposed to be figuring out where the client's motivation is. Are they even aware that some of these things are an issue? And if they're not aware, how do we raise that awareness? We're making sure that we're targeting specific needs. We're doing skill training with them. If you walk down our hallways at probation, you'll hear a ton of role play between a probation officer and a client, just practicing things like how to tell my peer no, about that I don't want to engage in this behavior. We increase positive reinforcement through incentives. We make referrals to the community services. And then, of course, we're using data all the time. I know it's not on the screen, but I'm often asked, I do a lot, all the hiring screening, and I'm often asked, what does a day in the life of a probation officer look like? And it's impossible to throw that on a screen. But I wanted to specifically narrow in on the evidence-based practice piece because this is, this is why we're investing our grant money into our staff. Our staff, it's more than just what we call checklist probation. Our probation officers are not sitting there saying, did you pay your fees? Did you go to treatment? Oh, you had a, or a positive drug test, shame on you. That is not what's happening. We are completing risk assessments. We are working with the clients when they first start to figure out what brought them here, what are the patterns that are leading to their criminal behavior. We're addressing their behavior drivers to create case plans. Every client's case plan is individualized to address their specific goals and objectives. All of our officers are trained in cognitive behavioral interventions. So we are working with the clients to help restructure their thinking. Their thinking got them here, their feelings got them here, led to a behavior. How can we help them change that for the future? We're applying incentives, we're applying sanctions, we're helping clients navigate all the community services. Our, all of our staff receive fidelity coaching. So we have evidence-based practices probation officer coaches who don't have a caseload. Their caseload are the probation officers. They're sitting in on appointments, they're doing pre-coaching, post-coaching, watching videos. We have trainings monthly, learning teams monthly, where we all come together to practice all of this material. These are just a few things that our officers do in their appointments. We do things like thinking, feeling, action, behavior chains with the clients. We receive training in trauma-informed care, and we apply that during our appointments. We do interactive journaling. We're reinforcing positive behavior, we're disapproving of negative behavior, we're doing alcohol and drug assessments, case plans, and just even teaching problem-solving skills. So I say all that just because I, I did want the community just to know what's going on at the probation department when a client is in a probation meeting. That is what's happening. What we're doing next with Community Corrections and the whole department, we're of course going to be closely monitoring funding. We did, I failed to mention earlier, we did learn that the state budget for the upcoming two years did cut Community Corrections across the state by almost 10%. So we are still waiting word from the Department of Correction regarding our 2026 grant applications to see how that funding cut will affect us. We will continue to invest in our staff, in their training, coaching, and fidelity efforts of evidence-based practices. We're, of course, always collecting data. We just put out our 2024 Annual Report, which is available online. And then we're, of course, always evaluating outcomes. So I know, I know that was quick, but I do appreciate you letting me take the time just to give, kind of open the door behind what's going on at probation, especially when it comes to that relationship between, between staff and clients. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stright. I will say, and I, and I always get your name wrong, and I do apologize for that. It's terrible. I feel so badly about Ms. Stright.
Please don't.
Thank you. It's, I just, you know, for some members of the community who see this either live or later recorded, this is their first opportunity to understand what happens in probation. So I think the way you presented this material was really, really good. So I think the way you presented this material was really, really good. And I think in a way, you are minimizing the successes in your presentation because, you know, for example, on the slide about safety, basically success in the program, not, non-rearrest, you know, you set your graph up like ninety-two to ninety-six, and so it looks like these big drops. Put it out there. Here's zero to a hundred. Where are we at? It's way up there, right? I mean, really, this is, it's to be celebrated. And I know it takes a lot. It takes a lot of engagement and learning and working with the community and community resources to make all of this happen. But let's see what happens with federal and state funding. Sorry, Commissioner Jones, do you have any comments or questions?
I actually have a question that I think I probably know the answer to. Do we offer the pretrial services over the weekend?
As far as assessments, we do not. At this point, clients can, or defendants who are booked into jail can either still post a monetary bond to get out, or they have to see a judge at an initial hearing if they're still in jail. So right now, there's not a policy in place where even if we were in the jail on the weekends, that we would be able to release someone. It's a wish list item.
Yes, yes, very much so. Yeah. Commissioner Madeira, comments or questions?
None, thank you. And I really do appreciate this information because I think that a lot of people don't know exactly how evidence-based and data-driven all of this is. Also, Monroe County is really lucky to have the wealth of problem-solving courts that it does and the wealth of devoted staff members that it does. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Pretrial diversion numbers, how are they over the course of the actual numbers? Is it, is it increasing?
As far as the number of clients?
Clients, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's been about, between about fifteen hundred to two thousand.
Okay.
So that's the number of people that we're actually seeing in the jail every year. Not all of those clients end up on conditions. That's a much, much lower number. That's usually hovers around a hundred and fifty at any given time. But everybody that we assess is receiving court reminder calls to come to court.
That's, oh, that's helpful.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. And I know that capacity is only so much as well. I mean, there's only so many people who can do this work, and there's only so many people in the jail, and there's only so many people in the jail for the first time, you know.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Please give our thanks to all the staff.
Absolutely, thank you.
We will move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Bloomington Junk Service Agreement Regarding Eighty-Two Eighty-One North Sycamore Street. Fund name, county general. Fund number, one thousand. In the amount not to exceed six thousand dollars.
I will second that. And with a motion and a second, I don't know, I assume it's our director planning, Ms. Nestor Jellin, who's going to be providing this information?
Yes.
Great, good morning, thank you.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner. So the Planning Department did receive an appropriation from the county council. This property is part of a litigation case that we have. We have interlocal between the town of Steinsville and Monroe County. And so during that time period, we had filed this litigation, and part of the court order is to go ahead and give the county the ability to clean the property. So we did receive three estimates for the work, and we went with the lowest of the three estimates that we received. The third estimate came in after the packet had already gone out, but it was a little bit higher than this one here. So we do have an estimate below for the property. I do want to note that we did go out to the property this morning. This property is located in the floodway, and I have just a quick video from this morning just to give you an idea of, right behind the property, how quick-moving and how much water is actually flowing directly adjacent to this property. The person that we've been working with, they have been able to clean some parts of the property with two dumpsters that we've placed. One dumpster was completely full, and then we placed a second dumpster. But there is still quite a bit of items on the property that we need to have cleaned up. So with this estimate, we will be able to clean the property, just the items on the ground are the number-one priority. There is a camper in the back of the property. That is something that we are going to address possibly later. We do not have a title for that. So to remove that is going to be a, a challenge that we are not dealing with at this juncture. So as you'll see in the estimate, there is a, a number for the removal of the RV, but we'd like to prioritize the property cleanup first. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Nestor Jellin. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yeah, I think this is a very needed project. Thank you for taking it on.
Commissioner Madeira?
I echo Commissioner Jones. I don't have any other remarks, just thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the difficult circumstances surrounding this, but this is something that planning doesn't typically have to get involved in, but we have a floodway and the community's safety is paramount. So I appreciate the way that this was managed and handled and that you've gotten what appears to be a good estimate. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, Ms. Turner King, would you please call the role on the Bloomington Junk Service Agreement Regarding Eighty-Two Eighty-One North Sycamore Street?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero.
Thank you so much. So we have our next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eighteen to amend text edits to the county development ordinance.
Second. That, that was not on mic, second. Ms. Nestor Jellin, would you tell us all about it?
Sure, this will be one of two text amendments on the agenda today. So I'll try to keep these succinct. The first one is separated from the second one mainly because this is just contained to formatting errors, Scrivener errors, things like that. With this being such a large document after it passed, and we've used it for about six months, we've notified, we've identified as staff just some areas that could use improvement, such as code reference updates or usability updates. So I have those for you today. I do want to mention that this did receive approval or a recommendation of a favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission by a vote of seven to one. And then also, on the cover page, that starts on page forty-six of the packet, I have an exhibit one of the page references. If anyone's following along, you just need to add forty-seven to that since this is within a packet. So I will go ahead and start with the first revision. So the first revision is that we are adding in a table in the beginning of the ordinance. This is very exciting to people that, like myself, who like to track over time how the ordinance changes and when things were added in, when things were taken out. That really helps us as we have to start versioning this document as people will use prior versions of this and newer versions of this, and questions like this often come up. So we will have this for the future. The next change is, this is going to be a, a nicer, clean version once the clean copy is out, but for track-changing purposes. We're going to have some more clickable links as people get to the beginning of the ordinance, just for usability. These links will take them directly to the two-pager that I'll show in just a minute. And then as far as the two-pager, we did have some edits as it relates to the use table. So the use table is really the driving document that says where all the different uses are permitted within each zone. But we created these two pagers because it's a really nice, shortened, condensed version that the public can take and read and easily digest. Okay, I'm in this zone, here are my uses, and here are my development standards or design standards. And just two quick pages, it gives them a lot of really good information. We alphabetized this and then also identified some uses that we had missed in the two-pager, but that were in the use table. So that is just a summary of the two-pager edits. Additionally, we realized that in the last code, we had the use kennel, and we had standards for the kennel below, but we forgot to actually add just a regular kennel use. We do currently have in the CDO, commercial breeding operations, but a lot of people do not do breeding of dogs and cats. So this kennel use is going to be helpful to have that back into the ordinance. And this, these use permissions are actually the same as the prior code. So this is what we wanted to have in there, we just missed it. The next change is we did some alphabetizing. This is again for usability. So green means that the text was moved. It does not mean that we added text. So if people are following along, all of the green text that struck out means it moved just to be alphabetized. Okay. And then as we're using the document, we do have four places to see definitions. The first is adult-oriented business. So we added, to know where you're at in the definitions section, we added the green text to identify the chapter you were in. We did the same for airport. And then we did the same as well for floodplain. And this is just so that if anyone is going through the text and they are looking at a definition in a certain chapter, sometimes definitions are very specific to that chapter. So if you're not in the airport, noise and sensitive overlay, you would not use those definitions. You would use the definitions in chapter eight-fifty. So this helps people identify where they are at in the code. This section in chapter eight-thirteen does, it is red text. I want to spend a bit of time on this. So we previously had language for having people that want to combine their lots for planning and zoning purposes. The reason being, sometimes people have two lots that they would like to build over the lot line of the two. This gives them a very easy and quick process without a planning procedure to combine those lots. And that language has been used pretty widely by title companies and attorneys and private landowners. So we would like to have that added back in to give people back that language and added option. We also added number six here for setback relief for people that were in platted subdivisions. So people that platted their lots prior to the CDO and then had their zoning changed, we wanted to make sure that since the plat had already received approval, likely through a Plan Commission or Plat Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Plan Commission, that we can still recognize those platted setbacks because some developments are already halfway built out. And to change the setback halfway through the development, we'll change the look and the buildable area, really, of the rest of the land that they weren't maybe anticipating. So this allows people to follow the platted setbacks as opposed to the zoning setback. Okay, and then throughout the code, you'll see that there are code reference corrections. These are just Scrivener errors that we want to point out. We also accidentally omitted three native trees, so we're adding those back into the ordinance. Formatting, we just had some corrections here to point people to the right location. These are changing to A, B, and C for clarity. And chapter four, the environmental constraints overlay, we had the old text of one-hundred-twenty-five feet. This is listed correctly in the two-pager as two-hundred feet, but it was missed in this chapter. So we're creating clarity and correcting the Scrivener's error. The reason this went from one-hundred-twenty-five to two-hundred feet is actually because the state of Indiana requires this setback for any septic system. So we're matching what the state says for separation distances from lakes for septic systems. And we believe that was a good change. And then this is again some code reference changes, and these will all be clickable and linked by the time we upload a clean copy. And then this section here, we did point people from the subdivision requirement to this section of the landscaping ordinance for street trees. Our Assistant Director worked closely with Purdue Extension to come up with a standard that makes sense for the rural areas in the case that they're not in an area that otherwise requires street trees for subdivision. And that allows people to preserve a certain area of tree canopy in return instead of planting new trees. So we're having a standardized area for people to be able to preserve trees that they are able to meet the standard in the rural areas when, when subdividing. The next change is in regard to the table that requires a certain level of plot plan, certified plot plan, or site plan. The biggest change here is that for residential storage structure, which is a accessory structure before you put any other development on the property, it was requiring a certified plot plan. We are, we are now moving that back to just requiring a scaled plot plan, which is the way it was in the prior ordinance. We're finding that a lot of people, at the time of residential storage structure, may not have a intent or plan to immediately develop the property with a single-family home. And so asking for a certified plan at this juncture has been difficult for some people and not necessarily required. The next change that we have is in regard to removing hearing officer from the code. This was something that was identified under the CDO amendments. We either needed to better identify when cases go to a hearing officer or remove it from the ordinance. We had the hearing officer in the prior ordinance, and it was carried into this ordinance, but we still didn't have good guidance on when that hearing officer could hear certain cases instead of, say, the Board of Zoning Appeals. With it being in there and us not using it and it not having great guidance, we decided that with the Plan Commission's guidance, we would go ahead and remove this. And if and when we would like to add that back in, we would do so in a holistic way and try and come up with a, a process at that time. So we removed that throughout the ordinance in a few places. And then last but not least, we just did some definition changes. These are just for clarity, really not substantial definition changes. They were mainly to residential storage structure and also the definition for planning director, just because it was referred elsewhere in, in other ways, and we just wanted absolute clarity. So with that, I think this is my last change. I can take any questions.
Right, thank you so much. As with any massive book of code, there are always things you find after the fact or that come to light as things are implemented that need to be addressed. So I appreciate the attention to detail here. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Just that this looks like it was a pretty thorough going over, and I hope that it'll last for a while.
Commissioner Madeira, comments or questions?
Again, I really appreciate all this thorough work. That darn Scrivener, he makes so much work for us.
Yeah, yeah, Scrivener is sloppy. Yeah, so let's see if there's any public comment as with a planning ordinance. We will proceed as we usually do. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? You may come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the podium or raise your hand on Teams. Any other general comment, questions, any comment from the board? I don't see any other public comments, so. So Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on ordinance 2025-18?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2025-19 to amend text edits to the county development ordinance regarding impervious coverage exceptions and calculations.
Second. With that motion and second, Director Nestor Jellin, if you would please walk us through this one.
Sure. So this is a text amendment specific to the impervious cover calculation. So unlike the first text amendment that we just saw, this is going to be edits that are content based or, or things that have been for discussion by the plan commission and planning staff and now the commissioners. So this is, this was recommended a favorable approval by the plan commission on May 20th. They forward it to you with a recommendation of six to zero. So just a little bit of background, prior to the CDO, we had some open space requirements and also we had something that was called building coverage maximum. So we consolidated that under the CDO and streamlined it across all zones to just be impervious cover maximum. Instead of just regulating rooftops or regulating open space, we just regulated the impervious surface. I have in here some changes to that definition, but basically it's anything that slows the passage of water through it or blocks the passage of water through it. So we're trying to, with this text under the CDO, encourage more compact development. What we found through the adoption of the CDO is that there are already a lot of nonconformities existing. And so if anyone wanted to build a shed or a pool or a garage or anything additional on their already developed property, they are running into needing a variance. So we've updated the numbers and also added some exceptions. We also went through the ordinance review committee and plan commission process and we were asked to provide some visuals and some data regarding some of the properties that were not meeting their impervious cover. And then also ones that even if this passes, what still would not meet the impervious cover maximums. So what we've put together is a table of different properties. The ones that are in green would be conforming. They would meet the requirements under the new text amendment that is before you today. The ones that are in yellow would potentially not be able to be developed from scratch if they were to be under the new ordinance. Now I put them in yellow because under the exceptions that you'll see, we are going to basically allow, we're going to grandfather, if you will, prior driveways that were built before March 11th, 2024, which was our last date of last flyover imagery. Or we're also going to allow for driveways that were, that had already received approval before December 19th, which is the day after the CDO passed. So we are going to see this being utilized mainly for new development. So I will go through a few pictures here of some examples. So the yellow property, for instance, if developed newly, we would encourage them to possibly build up closer to the road and possibly have a shorter driveway, possibly front loaded garage or a different design of the garage in relation to the house to reduce this amount of impervious. But since it was existing before March 11th, 2024 and December 19th, 2024, we would not count the driveway as part of their impervious. We would only count the actual structures on the screen. So they would be able to add additional impervious to this lot because we would not be counting this in this example. In this example as well, I have some calculations over to the right. And also to keep in mind, we lower the threshold when they're in a critical watershed. So that's also hindering a few of these properties because of the critical watershed nature. And then we do have an exception for driveways that will go to other properties such as like easements along their property to gain access to another property. But we did not build in an exception for what we would call a flag lot where the driveway is extending through their personal property and stops at their property. So this is something that if built new, we would still likely need to go through the variance process. And if this still becomes an issue, we will keep the plan commission updated and see about further text changes. And this is another example here. This is near Lake Monroe and it has quite a bit of driveway area. And then what they would like to add to the property was fairly significant. So it was something that would not, if built completely new today, would not meet the standard. And then I have an example of a property Camp Rock out by Lake Lemon. Because of the number of driveways in the residential zone, unfortunately did not meet the impervious requirement. So this is something that we did not necessarily account for, but if their driveways are already in, they're going to be allowed to continue and add more structures, but they also received a variance prior. And then this is another example in yellow here with existing. And then they also were, received a variance to build a, another garage at this location and extend the driveway. So just to give you an idea. And then just a few, I'll roll through these pretty quickly, some photos of properties that would be able to be built and meet the maximum impervious. So some areas, and then I also added additional area that could also be added. And this is with the text change that these would be allowed to be conforming. So with that, I'm going to go through the text amendment changes. So the first zone that we did some changes to was the agricultural residential zone district, which is the two and a half acre minimum requirement. And what we did to try to solve some of the issues that we are seeing is break this out a little bit further by acreage. So zero to 2.5 acres, they have both an increased percentage. It's going from 20% to 25%. And it's going from 20,000 square feet to 25,000 square feet of impervious. And then that number is slightly lower in the critical watershed. Once you are at beyond 2.5 acres, we broke it up into 2.51 to five acres and then 5.01 to 20 acres and then 20.01 acres or greater. So just as a context for people, 43,560 square feet is, and then is an acre. So this is quite a bit of impervious cover for an entire site, but understanding people have very large pieces of property. So we'll continue to update people. And as well, we exclude agricultural buildings from this requirement. So if you're building agricultural structures, we are not counting that against this number because we understand those have to be larger. So we did something very similar for the CVR district. And then for the forest reserve or forest residential five district, those acreages are a minimum of five acres. So we broke this out only into what would be three general categories, four if you kept the maximum, four critical watershed. So one less category because they start at five. And we matched sort of what we did for the prior, but met it to more like five acres at the start. And then the CVR is identical to the AGR, but I won't spend too much time on that. And then we did make some changes to the residential one district. This has been one that we've seen a lot of variances to the standard, especially because of the critical watershed mapping being closer to a lot of the areas surrounding the city of Bloomington and the town of Elsville. And people tend to have smaller lot sizes. So going with that, whichever is less sometimes can make it so that people do need a variance. But we've increased this percentage on both or on, under a critical watershed, we've increased this from 10 to 30% because without a critical watershed, it's 50%. And then we've also increased the square footage depending on how much acreage they have to see whichever they can go with. So that is the standard here. Then we did add the exception standard for all of the zones. So you will see that as a footnote, there was one change to community development as well, just slightly increased. So as you go through, you may see some amendments to the numbers. And we did work closely with the stormwater program manager and the drainage board to come up with some of these figures. I would like to go down to chapter 813, which has some of the exceptions that I've been talking a little bit about. So we added a purpose statement, which is important to have in there for people that aren't sure why there is a maximum impervious cover. And we want to remind people that the purpose of this standard is to try to encourage compact development and therefore reduce overall impervious cover, implement open space requirements on individual lots and possibly reduce negative stormwater impacts. We want to reduce erosion related to excessive sheet well runoff as a result of greater impervious cover, reduce ponding of water, reduce impacts to adjacent neighbors, protect critical watershed areas and areas prone to flooding and increase flash flooding as a result of larger impervious cover. I also want to just explain for just the public's edification, critical watershed is not the same as floodplain. So some people are in a critical watershed, but their elevation is quite high. But what that means is that that area is kind of all tied together, right? Even though your elevation is high, what you do on your property is still going to impact your neighbors in that same watershed. And some of our watersheds are experiencing flooding problems. So it is important to kind of bring it back to why this is an important standard. We do want to acknowledge that with increased rain events, more severe rain events in shorter time periods, having more impervious cover leaves less area for the water to drain and get away from structures, property and people. But we have built in some exceptions, like I mentioned, from the CDO passage for those existing built out lots. The first is that driveways in existence on March 11th, 2024 would be exempt. In addition, driveways that had proper approval for installation prior to December 19th, 2024 are exempt. Secondly, driveways within access and utility easements or utilized to access another property shall be considered exempt. And thirdly, sidewalks within private property that are for public use are exempt from impervious cover. And with that, I can take any question.
All right. Thank you so much. I know there's a lot of material there and it took a great deal of time and energy to get to where we are now. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Well, this is one of these really tough problems. Impervious surfaces really do have a big impact on the community as a whole, especially given what's happening with the weather lately. At the same time, I happen to have a very, very long driveway and I'm not sure I would have been allowed to have a house. So I, this was way prior to any of this, but I, I do appreciate the fact that for people who already got themselves into that position, there are, their situation is being taken into account.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah. And I.
Yeah. Pre-existing nonconforming remains.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Madera, comments or questions?
No, I appreciate all the detail and the hard work. I've been attending the planning commission meetings and reviewing those actually several times because this is very complex. And I also appreciate why these changes are necessary and I do think they will solve a lot of problems and save a lot of effort. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. And the plan commission did support this petition as well, correct?
Yes. They forward a six to zero vote with favorable recommendations.
Six to zero. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Let's see if there's any one who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Surveyor Enright Randolph?
Yes. I'm having a little bit of a glitchy connection, so I apologize for that. Hopefully I'm coming in clearly. I just wanted to say, serving on the stormwater management board, drainage board and plan commission, that I am in support of this and I hope that it is approved and asking for your approval. I also want to say, I think this is incremental step of getting it right. And currently what we have in, in place is a more strenuous burdens than a provision with our impervious surface max. And this is going to give relief where it's needed. I do know from, I wasn't able to attend the plan commission, so I would have voted in favor, so that could have been a seven, zero. But it was discussed about how we need to continue to look at this and, you know, bring it back as needed. So I think this is a great first step. And again, just asking for you to approve that, this amendment tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I don't see any other raised. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? May raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Any follow-up commentary from my colleagues on the board? Okay. All right. Ms. Turner King, would you please call the roll on ordinance 2025-19?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Nestor Jellin. Appreciate you. All right. Next item on our agenda, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2025-16, Westgate on Third PUD Outline Plan Amendment Three.
Second. All right. We have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Krsilias.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the proposed amendment three to Westgate on Third. It is currently in development as a multi-family residential PUD. You have seen this, you saw this twice last year for amendments to their ordinance phasing plan, introduced a phasing plan as shown on screen and also a phasing narrative. So this amendment includes proposed changes to the PUD phasing plan narrative. So there are no proposed changes to the uses or the design that have been established in, within the PUD ordinance. But with it, with that ordinance, we have the phasing plan and the narrative. The narrative describes what type of improvements across the site, whether it is final stabilization of grade on the site, whether a building is completed, sidewalks are installed, landscaping installed or ponds finished. It describes in which of the phase, what has to be done at what time in order for planning to issue a conditional land use certificate that allows them to seek their certificate of occupancy for the structures from the building department, assuming the building department has, is satisfied with their inspections and is able to do so. A conditional land use certificate means that there might be some final improvements that need to be completed and we normally set a timeline for that. So currently the site, they have received a conditional land use certificate or LUC for phase one and two. They have applied for phases three and four. This amendment was brought up by phase three. So within these phases, there are a total of eight stormwater by retention ponds on site, which is quite a bit. The phases not is described within the narrative is not everything is always complete when you go to get a conditional land use certificate because there is still active construction on different portions of the property. So it's very detailed and of course, a project manager, manager and the petitioner is dealing with. And of course, the project manager and the petitioner is dealing with a lot of moving blocks on-site. So when they started to approach the time for a conditional LUC for Phase Three, they had encountered some issues with a specific line within the phasing narrative. So that's on screen. It's point number three. So it discusses that landscaping permanent stabilization is completed in Phases One, Two, and Three. So side note, within the narrative, there are kind of what we would call checkpoints throughout the document that, so for example, in Phase Three, we got to this point where, in the prior phases, they then have to complete and make sure that landscaping permanent stabilization is done. Within the same sentence, it states that Pond One, Not, Three A, and Four are fully finished. To do this is quite an extensive process that does require a week to multiple weeks of very dry weather. So with this very rainy spring, they have had issues with being able to complete these ponds. So they are, they are currently waiting on this, on this amendment in order to receive a conditional LUC. I was, visited the site yesterday, and it, it looks ready for it. There's still maybe some landscaping areas that aren't quite perfect, but the site looks, the phase looks really good. So on screen is the phasing plan where I have circled Pond Four, One, and Three A. They, see, on my next slide here, as they were coming up against the extremely wet weather of this spring, you know, they provided some information. It was definitely an education session for me, learning about stormwater and how these large ponds get installed and how much time is really needed. So since this amendment has been applied for and has gone through the process, they've actually been able to make quite a bit of advancement on some of the ponds. So on screen is a couple of status photos. Pond One has been completed and Pond Three, well Pond Three A has been fully completed. Pond One has soils, drains installed and soils stabilized, and will be waiting for landscaping. And if that's, it's a work in progress, so I know the petitioner might be able to clarify more, but they are actively working to complete these ponds as weather allows. So what they are proposing within their phasing narrative is to include a sentence that the Planning Director worked with County Legal on, which gives us some flexibility when it's added into the narrative at certain points throughout the document. So if they do run into poor weather, they might still be able to continue working and get conditional LUC. And it allows some discretion for what is referred to as the administrator, which is the Planning Director, to be able to issue a conditional LUC. So that language is, it has been added to a few points. It states, however, if weather conditions prevent these actions from occurring prior to the completion of phase number, the following shall apply. It says, if the proposed used building or other structure is in conformity with provisions of this ordinance, except for final landscaping and final stormwater infrastructure improvements, a conditional land use certificate may be granted at the administrator's discretion, that the conditional land use certificate shall be valid for no longer than six months, but may be renewed for an additional six-month period at the administrator's discretion. This few sentences have been added into a few points within the narrative. It has been added for where it was requiring pond completion. It has been added for final surface asphalt. And that is because they, currently, the petitioner is thinking right now that some of the final phases may be approaching a land use certificate during winter months, of which the asphalt plants would be closed. It was also added for final completion of the fountain and fountain walkway that are adjacent to the greenway. So a little assurance for planning in the county on this site is that the final LUC issuance would not be able to be issued. It would be after Phase Eight until all of the improvements have been completed. Also, it would include that, we've recommended that the letter of credit release that's held by planning for stormwater infrastructure, it has to be installed to the required plans and approved by stormwater. So if there were any issues, we could hold the letter of credit that we have on file. And of course, a lot of this is the stormwater realm and is revolving around the completion of these ponds. The Stormwater Program is in support of these proposed changes, and they've been sympathetic with, with the weather this year as it has been so wet. So the Plan Commission heard this on May 20th this year, and they did forward a positive recommendation by a vote of six to zero. And of course, as we like to include, 90 days from that Plan Commission hearing is August 18th. Because of how quickly the petitioner and the, the project is moving, the petitioner stated yesterday on-site that they are completing a building every one to two months. I am sure we will not be running into that August date. So staff's recommendation for Ordinance 2025-16 is that we recommend approving the Plan Unit Outline Plan Amendment Number Six request for Westgate on Third PUD.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, was there anything else?
That is it, thank you.
Okay, all right. And this was approved by the Plan Commission by a vote of six to zero. Commissioner Jones, do you have comments or questions for Ms. Krsilias?
Yes, I'm just wondering, since a number of buildings are being completed, which of course means there's a fair amount of impervious surface going in, and we are getting all of this rain, is this causing any problems for other residents in the area or businesses or anything, or roads? Is the flooding able to be contained on the project?
I have not heard any complaints. So all of the stormwater runoff, all of the stormwater on-site is going to be directed to one of, or multiple of those eight ponds that are on-site. So even though the ponds are not completed, they are holding water and working as they should under the guidance of stormwater for water that is hitting the site during construction. But in order to complete them, it requires some improvements that would take dry weather to install.
Right, yes, and, and I certainly understand the problems with the weather.
Commissioner Madera?
Sorry, I was on mute. I have no comments. Again, I appreciate the thoughtful explanation. This all makes sense to me.
And I know that during our Plan Commission hearing on this, that we had questions from Ms. Ridge about Park Square Drive and paving and ensuring that everything works together. And I think that her question was addressed, but I would just ask that you maintain communication between the petitioner and Ms. Ridge as they're trying to move forward with their paving projects. Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is a petitioner or petitioner's representative here? I didn't ask that question, sorry. Ah, did you want to speak? I'm so sorry, I went out of our protocol. Okay, thank you. Sorry. The last two items didn't have a petitioner, so I got out of the habit very quickly. Thank you so much for being here. All right, so is anybody which to speak in opposition to this petition? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Any further comments or questions for my colleagues? No, okay. All right, Ms. Turner King, would you please call the role on Ordinance 2025-16?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Madera?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, thank you. I was going to have an identity crisis. All right, we don't have any appointments today. I don't think, Ms. Turner King, is there anything for work session?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Yeah, there isn't anything on the agenda now. I just am giving you that one second opening to throw something on our agenda. All right, great, thank you. So, so do have a few announcements today. We did, all three of us attended the Convention Center groundbreaking. And it was a great event. It was a beautiful day. It was hot, sunny-ish. But it's, it was exciting to see so many people in the community coming out to support that groundbreaking, and we can't wait for the ribbon cutting. I'm just going to say it that way. And I'm glad that Councilmember Crossley noted the, that Cheryl Munson would have really appreciated that day. She worked hard for it.
She did.
She worked hard for it. I'm, I'm going to see what we can do about getting something, a room or something named.
That would be very appropriate.
Yeah, she was, she's amazing. But yeah, you know, when I was driving over to it, I was thinking, Cheryl would love this.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So just, we did, it's, it's been a while, but we did have a tornado come through our community on, can't forget that it happened. And there, we're coming to, this is mid-May, and so we're coming to the point where there are some, still, there, there's assistance available still. And one of the things that has opened now is Disaster Recovery Center at Ivy Tech in Room B as in Boy 201. Now, this Disaster Recovery Center closes Friday at 3:00 PM, the 18th, Friday, the 18th at 3:00 PM. So it is open Monday through Friday, eight to five, Saturdays, 10 to two. This information is available on our website under the What's New feature in the center of the page. So this is where you can go get information about the potential, because we have been declared, this has been declared emergency, for small business administration, long-term and/or low-interest loans. And this is not just for businesses. And also the State Disaster Relief Fund. But if you aren't sure what you're eligible for, go to the Disaster Recovery Center at Ivy Tech and find out. That's, that's how this works. I will also note that we had dumpsters placed at three locations in our community, Lighthouse Christian Academy, East Jackson Creek Drive and South Sandpaper Drive, and Elrin and Harmony Road. This ends tomorrow, right, Ms. Purdy? The dumpsters, that ends tomorrow, the six. So please get your yard debris in a separate bin from the construction debris. Please do not put debris in the roadway. We are, County Highway is not responsible for cleaning up trees on your property. And we appreciate everyone's help and assistance with this. American Red Cross is accepting applications for case management. So if somebody is impacted by the tornado, they can call 1-800-RED-CROSS and, or go to the location at 441 South College Avenue. Furniture needs, go to St. Vincent de Paix, call 812-961-1510, extension three. Salvation Army has clothing available, 812-336-4310. The Hoosier Hills Food Bank can help with food needs. And veterans are encouraged to contract, contact the Monroe County Veteran Service Office at 812-349-2658. And just a reminder, as we've had a bunch of rain today. Yeah. Yeah, it was a lot. That there is a county alert notification system. Just go to co.munro.in.us, click on the megaphone in the center of the page, and sign up to receive alerts about any emergencies in the area. I will note that I had a conversation with Emergency Management because the tornado sirens went off at IU on Tuesday at like 2:30, and it was clear and sunny. And apparently, they've got some technical software difficulties going on, so. But that's the first thing I did, is I looked at my phone. Did I get an alert and miss it? No, that's, it's just how, how it should go. We do have office hours six times each month. Just go see our calendar at co.munro.in.us. There is a blood drive at Ivy Tech, C130A and B today, one to six. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. The next blood drives are Wednesday, July 9th, Thursday, July 10th. July 9th is 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. July 10th is 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. I will also note that we had such an interesting week last week because on Thursday, the United States Department of Homeland Security, in response to Presidential Executive Order 14287, issued a list of local communities nationwide that the federal government alleges violates unstated federal immigration laws. We are the only county that was on that list. So we responded, and the list is gone. But I'm, I'm, my guess, my best guess is it's going to come back, not as a big, long list, but as something that's going to come back later in other form or fashion. So we're, we're, we are ever vigilant, and we appreciate the members of the community who wrote to us afterwards and said, "Thank you." And my response is always, "We have the easy job." You know, I, I feel for members of our community who are wondering what, what their future holds. I really do, and I'm sorry about the anxiety and the stress that our government is putting them under. And I wish they weren't, so I'm going to leave that at that. So gun violence prevention, we're orange tomorrow. There is a resource fair here at the courthouse at 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM. There will be a program, and again, this is Friday, June 6th. Anything else for the good of the order? Commissioner Madera?
Just, I wanted to underscore remarks that you made, actually Commissioner Thomas, at the groundbreaking, and that is to recognize the contribution of Commissioner Givens to the project. She worked on this along with you guys for years and along with many other members of the community. And I do think that that was a very, a very demonstrated and heartfelt and energetic commitment. And, and I think that that does need to be commemorated and recognized as long as we're also recognizing the contributions of Cheryl Munson again. And it was my pleasure to be there. And again, just the remarks of Mr. MG earlier. There are moments we disagree. There are moments that we talk with each other, and we always come out, I think, better people for it. And I think the Convention Center expansion is sort of a testament to that process. So again, just proud to be serving with you guys.
Great, thank you. I do want to take a moment of personal privilege, if I might. And I have a statement I'd like to make, and this is just for me. This is not from the Board of Commissioners, but it's important enough that I'd like to make the statement. So, "The Chamber of Commerce issued a newsletter a little more than a month ago disparaging me as an elected official." It's sort of a whatever, you know? Used to it, yep. However, the Chamber, which in my opinion spends a bit too much time on political affairs for a 501(c)(3), has an agenda, pro-housing no matter what. The Chamber and the developers have a mutual relationship. Meanwhile, people like our Plan Commission President, Margaret Clemmons, gets caught in the crossfire. The Chamber is doing what the Chamber is doing. That's fine. That's their role. That's fine. But the Chamber didn't like her vote on a zoning petition. They didn't tell the readers of a newsletter that the majority of the Plan Commission supported that petition as well. supported that petition as well. It then came to the Board of Commissioners for a decision. Dr. Clemens, like some other members of the Plan Commission, are appointed by the Board of Commissioners. We don't direct them to vote in any particular manner, and we have appointed both Democrats and Republicans over the many years. It is inappropriate for the Chamber to direct their vitriol against an appointed member of a body. It is disrespectful to her personally. Malining someone who is essentially volunteering her time to the community is misdirected and disgraceful. How's that for the word "community"? If you go to the newsletter, you'll get why I said that. I am so proud of Margaret Clemens. She has stood up for the interests of Monroe County residents in the fight against the city's annexation process. Her home wasn't targeted for annexation, but she cared so much about people in the community who faced potential property tax increases if their homes were annexed, meaning their affordable homes would become unaffordable, let's talk about affordable housing, and she stepped up. She's worked hard for this community that she loves. She didn't gain anything, but in fact, spent a great deal of her precious time and funds to support county residents. And when Dr. Clemens fought annexation for so many years, she didn't do it again for financial gain. Similarly, her role on the Plan Commission is as a resident, not someone with a vested financial interest in a particular outcome. Her service on the Plan Commission is for the betterment of the Monroe County community. After these personal attacks appeared in the Chamber's newsletters, Dr. Clemens reached out to the Chamber and asked for a meeting. A month later, here we are, a month later, and they have not had the courage to sit down with her. I say, shame on them. Dr. Clemens and others who serve our community deserve our thanks, whether we agree with their votes or not. They do not deserve to be attacked. We want to encourage residents to share their time, talent, and expertise as members of boards and commissions, not discouraging them with disparaging comments. If the Chamber wants to malign a resident who serves the community, the least they could do is have the courage to meet with her. Thank you for letting me get that off my chest. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Our next meeting is June 12th, 10:00 AM here in the Natu Hill Room. With that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.